But it is seven o'clock, so I'd like to get going. Call the meeting to order. Pull up the share my screen. Oh, hello, welcome everyone. Like to call to order the planning board meeting town of Wakefield. For September twenty second. This is September twenty second. It's the first full day of fall, I believe. Twenty twenty. So the, as we go through in each meeting, there's some Zoom control if anybody has any questions. I think most of us have the hang of Zoom by now, but if you do raise your hand and I don't notice, please feel free to unmute unmute. And just. Ask me, interrupt. That would be great. If if you don't have a talking part and you have some background noise, please mute. That way everybody can be heard. I know tonight's agenda, we don't have a big agenda and thank you again, Susan for putting this all together. And let's see. See and see. Okay, so item number two approval of minutes from June twenty second. We also have meeting minutes that were sent to us. By for the September fourteenth meeting with the town council. So I still have not gone through and prepare these. To send out to everyone, but that's something that, like I said, I do have more time. To do that this weekend, I'm putting aside time to get it all done. So you should be receiving a bunch of emails this weekend with meeting minutes. With everything to look at and approve and that way at our next meeting in October, we can see if there's any questions and review and discuss the the format. Item number three. Set public hearing zoning text change section one ninety dash four B adding definitions in section one ninety dash thirty one adding new paragraph L. So we've we've discussed this and town council actually reviewed it and I don't know if anybody stayed in the meeting last week to to listen to that, but it was good to hear it again. But Attorney McGrails here this evening and we, is there anything we need to discuss to prepare this? I know. Action items for us will be Susan, we need to get this. Public hearing, the ad listed. In the item. And on the website, I believe it's fourteen days before. Brian, yeah, is that correct?
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could add to that, I think tonight what. I will request is that you set the public hearing for your next meeting, which I think is October thirteenth.
I'm looking at the dates now. That's correct. October thirteen.
Officially do that. And then there's a, there's a notice procedure for your hearing that I'm very well familiar with. I've worked with the Tom plan and Mr. Revus on that. For a number of years on various zoning changes and I'm happy to. To work with Susan to make sure that it gets done according to state law. And to help in that regard. And what has to happen is it has to be published in the Wakefield item twice. It would be. Has to be fourteen days before the meeting. So the deadline would be for the first publication would be next Monday. And then it has to be published again the next week. So it's two successive weeks. That it has to be published. At that time, it also needs to be posted at Town Hall. That that notice of your hearing. Copy also needs to be sent to the Department of Housing and Community Development. And to the into the local planning council, the MA, they could see MAPC.
MAPC, yeah.
That has to get served or or sent a copy of it of your notice of your meeting. And then also every one of the planning boards of the abutting cities and towns. Has to be sent notice. So I I can prepare that notice. It's pretty simple. Paul Rebus, I have his template to do that. And then I can coordinate with Susan to make sure that the item. Right, we got the right dates with the item and then. I can. I can actually provide the the envelopes to the various entities for Susan.
That would be wonderful.
I can't, I can't do, I can't do the notice or I can't send it that, you know, it has to come from your board appropriately because otherwise I could say I did it. So it has to really come from your secretary, Susan. But again, I'm happy to offer my resources to make that an easier process, especially where this is the first time without the town planner.
If you could, because I did go, I started, I do have access to Paul's folders. Planning board wise, I'm planning town planner wise and I start to go through them and. They're well organized, but I just don't have the system down yet. So I really appreciate you having that template available and working with Susan to. To prepare the correct documents because I was not aware of the MAPC. So I'm really glad you brought that one up.
Yeah, and then what happened?
Was the only one on the list I didn't have. And just to be clear too, for the abutting towns, do you mind go, because I had. Reading, Lynnfield, Stonem, Sogus, Melrose. Am I missing?
I think that's it. You have Lynnfield, Sogus, Melrose, Stoneham and Rennan. Right, Wilmington doesn't about us.
No, that's the list that I had, but I didn't know if it was. It was within a certain proximity. No, I couldn't find the right wording. It didn't say a butter and it didn't say a proximity. So it said surrounding. So I just wanted to make sure legal wise that we do have that covered.
Yeah, we'll have that covered. Okay, yeah. It's all critical because what happens is like just happened with the other articles that were passed at June's town meeting. Once if they do pass or if it does pass, then then what happens is there's a package that has to go into the secretary to the Attorney General's office. And we have to provide evidence of all the of compliance with all of those notices and dates. Right, they have a checkbox to make sure that that we as a town complied. With providing notice and if you don't, it could be critical or it could be fatal.
Excellent, okay.
So so I I double check that. If I have any question or if we do, we'll we'll. You know, I'll probably what I'll do, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you is when Susan and I set this up, I'll just send an email to Tom Mullen. Just tell him exactly what we've done and that.
That's perfect. And if you can copy and copy.
I'll copy you. Or as well, you know, we have town council weighing in if an issue ever came up at town meeting, Tom will participate. Where it's the first time.
Is there anyone else on the board that would like to be copied on the correspondence back and forth? With Brian sending to Susan? Just to be clear, if emails are sent. To all planning board members, you can't respond all back. I just wanted to make sure Megan, I know it's, yeah, okay. Just for open the open meeting laws, you can push the information out, but we can't have a conversation. So is there anybody on the board that would also like to receive? A C C, a copy of the email correspondence that Attorney McGrail will be sending to our secretary Susan, our clerk. Okay. But just me and the correspondence with Mr. Mullen, is that for, is that something that is required or it's more?
No, I don't have to. I just, I, you know, whenever it's a legal issue, no, I always. Usually include Tom.
Yeah, I appreciate this inside information because I know, as you know, Paul Revus did so much work that. I'm just becoming aware of and I think the board is too with all the extra added. Information. Okay.
Yeah, there's definitely, there's definitely a gap now. So, okay. But, you know, but he he did such a good job of laying all this out. He, you know, I've done numerous zoning changes with him over the past twenty years. So, you know, I have his playbook to make sure everything is done right. I have to share it.
Is there anything else we need to review for setting the public hearing? I I believe we have the wording and everything correct and the dates now for what has to be sent and where and what? Okay. So we're all good. Anybody on the board have any questions for Trini McGrail regarding the public hearing? Megan?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Is this procedure set because it's a zoning change or does this process need to be upheld for any other changes that we make?
But zoning bylaw change, this is very specific for a zoning bylaw change. So when any zoning bylaw is proposed. We are the. We are the board that allows the public to come in and review and give input. Back to those who are proposing the change. So we usually have two or three meetings, sometimes four, depending on the conversation. And if there's changing to the wording of the proposal for the zoning change. The people who are proposing it. Have feedback from the town, which helps them when it does go to town meeting. So as a board, we do not decide whether this zoning. Proposal passes or not, but we help prepare it and we become that tool or vehicle for the town to have a public hearing. This all prepares those proposing the change in the town for town meeting. So it's not like, hey, town meeting, here we have a proposal change for zoning. Let's learn about it now. So the information's out there weeks, sometimes months ahead. So there's, there's plenty of time to review. This also gives the chance for those proposing the change to prepare. With more detail, knowing that they're getting feedback from the town. So when they need the two thirds vote at town meeting to change the zoning bylaw. They're better prepared. And Attorney McGrail, if you'd like to add anything to that, please do.
No, I think, I think that's fine. Just the only, I guess the addition is is that. At the end of your public hearing, the board has to vote to make a recommendation of either the town meeting should approve it or or not.
And right, so thank you for bringing that up. So as a board, we will recommend favorable action. Or not recommend favorable action when we're asked at town meeting to step up to the podium.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Megan?
Yes, thank you.
Just want to add on to that is is if if the the on the state law, unless there's a planning board recommendation, it cannot go forward at town meeting. So that has to happen for the for the bylaw. So if it ever to go to a voted town meeting, but a, there's cases where local planning boards have neglected. To actually make the recommendation, then even if it passed town meeting, the Attorney General would not uphold it.
Oh, interesting. I didn't know that.
You have to have that recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. That's always good. To learn more about the process. All right. Well, thanks. Any planning board members have any other questions on item three? All right, thank you. Item number four.
Mr. Chairman, I could just ask through you to Sue. Sue, were you around this week?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'll get in touch.
Just for October thirteenth or October thirteen and twenty seven.
Well, it will be October thirteenth where the hearing is set and then it would be continued that night to the twenty seventh. So when we notice it, we only have to notice it for the thirteenth.
Right.
Yeah. And I've got Paul's template for the notice, Sue, so I'll draft it and send it to you and Bill.
Okay, fine. And Susan, if you don't mind, if you, the magic that you did with reformatting. The older font and everything to the newer header and everything, that would be great. So it's just all aligned with, because I know Paul's template probably has the older header. And the other, the older font and it's not aligned with the new branding for the town.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You good, you too. Have a nice night. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Attorney McGrail. Item number four, fourteen Montrose School Lane. I did not stop by to get out and look. When I did drive by. Thursday of last week, it looked the same. The fence, construction fence was up and there was still materials down. So. The homeowners were not home, so I did not want to go on to their property. But I, if anybody, did anybody else, Bill, did you get a chance to go by? But you're on mute. You're on mute still. You can shake your head no or nod yes. It's not, okay, there you go.
No, no, I I actually went down Montrose and I go to call, I was it was during work. So I call and then I had an emergency and I had to took off, but I've seen this before that and it doesn't seem like too much is being done.
Right. And I know there is a a wait for a lot of in-ground pools with, there's a backlog with people installing them. So. That might be the case. What I'll do, I'll send a courtesy email to the owners and ask just for an update from them to see where the plan is and where it's going. Just. Just again, for the courtesy, but also to let them know that we are still monitoring what's happening out there. Any comments or questions from the board?
Hey, Bill, excuse me. Why don't we ask him, when is, when is it going to be completed?
Right.
But we should, we should do that because. Well, it gets to the point where the ground is frozen. He's not going to be able to win.
Yeah, which could be tonight.
Right.
Right, okay. All right, thanks, Bill. And Megan, I know this, we can discuss Montrose School Lane in more depth. I can't remember if you did attend one of the meetings, but the homeowners approached us. They're in a subdivision that we've had some issues with because there is a buffer zone, meaning a no disturb zone between that that lies within their property, but. Helps the people who are budding the property. So it maintains the trees. And there's a lot of that goes along with that, that as a board, we're really conscious about. Where the visibility, the noise and everything else that goes along with the beauty of having nice trees and have them not disturbed. So it's something we have had. Three or four different rounds with a few of the homeowners on Montrose School Lane to help the butters and help the homeowners come to agreements to where everything works out. And it's more about cutting down trees they shouldn't be cutting down. Okay. Any other comments or questions on item number four? Okay, item number five, items not anticipated by the chair. So. I am really impressed that our two new members are both sworn in and Susan gave a quick update before we. Called the meeting to order this evening that both Megan and Joanne are sworn in and I just wanted to give this opportunity for Megan. I'm not sure if Joanne's on, I didn't check the participants, but I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing my screen. If. If there are any questions that you have for the current board members or for Susan that we can address, I know I just want to. Back up a little bit. Megan sent this amazing email out. And I know you apologize for it being so long, but it was so nice to read through because I'm like, wait, I don't have that book. I don't have that. And I know you spoke with. Paul Donaco, who was former member of the board now on town council. And there's some great books that I know I depend on. For example, the zoning bylaws and the subdivision rules and regs. As well as Bobrowski's town, the 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 land and survey law book, which I have a copy of somewhere too. But I know, I know with all of these publications, I don't have any of the other ones. I I usually go to the mass.gov. Or other. The other links that I have saved, especially the Wakefield town page, which does have. Versions of the latest plan and the town planner website has. A bunch of links on the left side of it, which I can share if we want to go go into that. But I just wanted to quickly say thank you for your email. And I I plan to put together an email with a bunch of those links and share it with the entire board. That way. We can all be on the same page when we do go to these references. So Matt and Bill, if you do have any, anything to share, any emails, I'm sorry, any. Links that you go to are any quick little tips on how you quickly get information. If you can send them to me in an email, I can compile it all together.
All right, I can do that.
All right. I I put aside time for Saturday morning and Sunday morning to to jump on planning board stuff. So if you do have in between Cub Scouts and lacrosse. They'll figure that one out. But if you could send. Me those links by Saturday, that would be great.
I did have a question in regards to like getting some of the hard copies. So in the absence of the town planner. Is there like a certain individual or department that I could contact to like get a printed version of the subdivision rules and regulations for the town?
Let me find out. What I, what I'll do is I'll send an email to, and Susan, I know you're there and around, but town hall wise. But I want to be able to go, I was in Paul's office, our former town planner, Paul Revus's office. About a month and a half ago, I think, I think it was in August, early August. So. Maybe it was July. Anyway, he does have copies of things, but my concern is if somebody gets you a copy and it's an outdated version. I know right now the zoning bylaws that I have from February six, twenty fourteen with amendments in the back. And what I would be more concerned with is that it doesn't have the. Amendments that are in the back of it.
Bill, one of the things is that I don't think they're publishing a book anymore. It's all going right online. And we know that some of the stuff online isn't consistent with the last book. So. It would be nice if there was an official printout of the actual regs. So we know. What's on, if what's online is good or not. And that's been one of my pet peeves. And I know we had started to talk with. Paul a while ago about this in. So that he did send me and I have to see if I can find that where he went through and marked up what the differences were between the online and the last book that was published. So I'll see if I can.
I do remember that and I. Yeah, I was hoping you would chime in because it is. It is a big deal like that. And I believe this was pointed out to us from somebody that came into a meeting back a few years ago. That they went to the town website and went into the, was it subdivision or was it zoning? Can't remember.
It was subdivision.
Yep, subdivision.
Before us.
And Megan, just a quick backstory on this. It wasn't, from my recollection, it wasn't anyone in the town that created this. Online version of our subdivision book, but it went out to a consultant that put it all in.
Okay.
And and some of it was incorrect.
As usual.
Right. So you can see here's chapter ninety four, building construction, zoning streets, so all the way through. So. It it's pretty easy to go through it. The hard part is that I have a hard time with is. Finding exactly what you need. And some of the other documents that you mentioned, mentioned like maps and the floodplain, that is, let me move this over a little bit because I think Zoom is blocking some of. This, okay. But you can see here's that table one, table of use regulations, just in an understanding like all the different use groups and what different zoning. Districts they're allowed to be built and you can see yes, no, yes, no, all the way down here and then special permit. So there isn't. There isn't a trick to understand how this all works. It's not like magic. You have to really go through and it's laid out where there should be a key. There's a legend here. And then you go through and look for if you needed to find out, okay, well, what about that municipal recreational use? Well, that's by special permit in a. And then what's the SSR mean? And single residence and general residence and all the different districts. So that will get into. Understanding. So that's just a quick look at. What we have online. And I think this is what you were leading into in. In your message.
Yeah.
Like what resources do we have? So this is on. Departments and town planner. So I'm on the town planner site. And affordable housing information downtown, we all the rail trail and down to zoning resources at the bottom. And this has subdivision rules, zoning bylaws, zoning maps. And then I can bring you to the zoning, the ZBA site. Which is, yeah, so the map library. So you can see. Plan, general zoning overlay maps, precinct maps, which is always good around voting time. We have to know which one you are.
Five.
I'm five as well. But here's the zoning map. And there is the code for, you know, the residence business and the business is what we're looking at for the zoning. Proposal, the bylaw change that Attorney McGrail and the savings bank proposing.
Yeah, I mean, some of them will definitely be easy to access online, but then there's others that would be probably easier to have like a physically in front of me. So.
Right. And that's, I think, honestly, that's where you're gonna, if it's like mass.gov and they have a PDF that you can download and if you want to print out certain pieces. That's what you can do. If there is. I'll find out if if I can get my hands on. That could be in Paul's office, any copies of the same. What I'll do is I'll bring my books with me and to make sure the dates and the information in the back is available.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Excuse me. Any other board members have? Any items that they. That we did not anticipate for the agenda? Okay. Well, this is, this is nice for change. To go through a meeting, we we don't have too many of these, Megan.
But easing my way in, I'll take it.
Right. And I know I I mentioned it in the last meeting and the meeting before that. It's on me about meeting notes and just a quick update. All the twenty nineteen meeting notes have been delivered to Sherri Dalton. And I have not pulled together all the twenty twenty notes yet. And we do have the group now from. Since COVID started to review and approve at the next meeting. Okay. Let's see, one last thing I did receive from Trini McGrail this afternoon. I did receive the. Lovess. Updated documentation. So once I review that with making sure the the five or six things we did have in there for Lovess is all correct. I need to sign a copy of that and Trini McGrail's going to deliver that and I can sign. It needs to be signed in person. Then he's going to bring it to the town clerk. One more project. Megan, you did ask for a few of the last written responses, responses. How did you word that? Written. Just what we as a planning board have written as agreements or documents or anything like that. We haven't had too many. Town meeting. Definitely gave us a few because of the zoning bylaw changes that were proposed and a few others. But this year, we have not had many. Written correspondence from the planning board to any residents or parties or projects that were coming in that we had to go through and get documents. Created for the the process that we usually run into is for a subdivision. The attorney, in this case, Brian McGrail, will prepare documents with a lot of different items that could have waivers in them, could have. Like an HOA type of consideration. So whoever now purchases the lots and builds home, builds a house on it. There's some control that the planning board has from this agreement that we put through. So as a planning board, we work pretty hard on those documents. But we haven't, I can't think of the last one we did. I don't matter, Bill, if you. As a planning board, we work pretty hard on those documents, but we haven't, I can't think of the last one we did, I don't know, Matt or Bill, if you. That we spent a lot of time on, I mean, the projects like Lovess and Glendale and a few others that have gone through. These are projects that we've been reviewing and looking at for about a year, year and a half, so it's just the fine tweak tweaking now. Yeah, that was a little long-winded, but I'm trying to explain, there's, there's so much to, to.
Yeah.
So bringing you up to speed with.
The most recent decision that we had. Lovess is the most recent decision, obviously, that we're done, and then before that was Prospect Street, so. And those decisions are actually recorded at the registry of deeds, so. That's usually a good, good place to actually go and see what, what was actually enacted. Easily located. Online, so, which is how I usually find a lot of documents is. I just go to the registry website and type in the street address and you can pull up. All the documents that we approved. So.
That's helpful, so Lovess and Prospect Street, okay, thank you.
Right, and this is the masslandsrecord.com is the site. Matt, I'm sure you have your links, but this is how you go through and. You can see all the different, so North Middlesex. I believe is the one. And the registry of deeds, and then there's a search up here. The business name or first name of the person, or you can. Control the search here, and there's an advanced search, which is, Matt, I don't know if you usually use this, but I usually go to the advanced search, and then I could pull in. The town. Oh, is it not under north?
Is where we are.
No sex south, sorry, yep, I went to north. I clicked on it again, well, you get the idea, South Middlesex. And I go to the advanced search, so I can control it a little bit easier. Go to Wakefield, and you can get the information in here, and once you start to, from the nineteen hundreds, so be careful. To change the date, otherwise it'll take, take a long time to search, and then you have the names up here, last name, first name, which we do get from our plans.
Okay, great, that's really helpful, thank you.
I'm sure, Matt, if you have any, you probably do have some tricks to make that search go faster, if you can send that to me. And I can share that with Joanne and Megan and Bill too.
Yeah, I can, I can see if I can send some links to you, so.
Yeah. I know you're. You're pretty fast with all that, it takes me a little bit to get on there and find the right stuff. And Megan, what would be cool is you can start by looking up like your land, your stuff, and to see, it's, you get the history of it too, you get to see all the different. People who owned it before and all.
Well, I will do that.
Yeah. Does become a rabbit hole. All right, does anybody have anything else tonight to share or? And if not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I have to apologize, my internet has just been horrible tonight, and I keep breaking up, so. And not getting the whole conversation, but luckily it's a short meeting, so I'll get things worked on for.
And you could go and look at the recording, that should be posted tomorrow. All right. Megan, anybody second that motion? All right, that's Bill. All in favor? All right, thank you all, thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
All right, bye.